Trying to give a couple of commissioners here time to park and get in here, so just bear with us. We're going to get started in just a few minutes. Call this meeting to order, Little Rock Planning Commission here, July 10th, 2025. At this time, can we get a roll call vote to determine the quorum?
Yes, sir. This is a roll call vote for the Little Rock Planning Commission for July 10th, 2025. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Bernard?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Person? Russell? Samad? Trimble? Baxter?
Here.
Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, great, excellent, all right. I'm certain that every commissioner got a chance to review the minutes here. If we didn't have any questions on that, I would like, I would love to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, I give a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person? Russell? Samad? Trimble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Perfect, moving right along here.
Question or information to staff, is seven a quorum, or am I miscounting?
Six is a quorum.
Six is a quorum, okay, all right.
But, but do we have to do the notification to applicants that?
After, after the consent agenda vote.
Ah, okay, okay.
Perfect, all right. Moving right along, for the reading of the consent agenda, please.
Following is a consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of July 10th, 2025. First group of items are items that are being withdrawn or deferred. Item number one, file number Z 10,00132, is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item number three, S 1963, is being deferred to the September 11th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number four, Z 6978A, is being deferred to the August 14th, 2025 meeting at the request of the applicant. Item number six, Z 10,00115, is being deferred to the August 14th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number seven, Z 10,00166, is being deferred to the October 9th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number 11, Z 10,00171, is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Next are the items on the consent agenda for approval. Item number five, Fuentes Manufactured Home CUP, is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. So the first item on consent approval is item number eight, Z 9121B, Honeysuckle Place, Phase Two, Revised PDR, East Side of Honeysuckle Lane, 6800 Block. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR revision subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number nine, Z 6644A, HR Lodging LLC, STR1 Special Use Permit, 1711 North Tyler Street. Staff recommends approval of the SUP request, subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And item number 10, the Vong STR2 Plan Development, is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. So you will have items two, five, and 10 on the regular agenda for discussion, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. If we don't have any questions from any of the commissioners, I would love to entertain a motion for the approval of the consent approval agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, I give a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person? Russell? Samad?
Yes.
Trimble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you. If your item was on the consent agenda, you are more than welcome to stay, but at this time, you may leave at this particular time. If your item has been moved to the regular agenda, that was item number five and item number 10, then obviously you would need to stay here. So we're just going to give just a few seconds for any of the consent agenda to depart. Also, while we're waiting here, each item number here that we will have, we will go in numerical order. So that would be, the regular agenda is already item number two, Z dash 10154, followed by number five and number 10, respectively. All right, also, each item number up, whether if you're for or against, or for or in opposition of the item, then each side would have up to 20 minutes, okay? So for an example, if you have 20 people that oppose this item, then respectively each cart that's filled out will respectively have one minute, okay? So at this particular time, we're going to go as an order. Item number two, is the applicant present? For the Serenity at Colonel Glenn?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we do that, you have eight members present for the applicants on items two, five, and 10. It's the policy of this commission. If there are eight or fewer commissioners present, the commission is made up of 11 members, and it takes six positive votes to get an item approved. And when the commission has eight commissioners or fewer, the commission offers a deferral to the applicants to the next meeting in hopes that there will be more members present. So that would be what you would offer to the applicants.
All right, yes. So if the applicant is present, of course, that is a, I guess, a, thank you, Monty, a blanket statement from staff. So all items on the regular agenda today, you do have the option, if you would like to defer. Of course, that is at your own determination, if you would like to defer into the next meeting, you're more than welcome. But as follows, we will have the applicant approach the, go ahead and approach the podium if they're present. Okay, you're present, okay. And then while the applicant is approaching the podium, we will have the reading for item number two.
Item number two, file number Z 10,00154, this is Serenity at Colonel Glenn, PDR, located at 8301 Colonel Glenn Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone this 1.87 acre property from C3 and R2 to PDR. The proposed residential development will contain 16 tiny homes on wheels designed for single-family occupancy. The residential house spaces will be available for rent and not sold. So basically, what the applicant is proposing is to have 18 rental spaces for a person who owns a tiny homes on wheels to move, to rent that space and move their home onto that property for a period of time. The site plan shows access to the site from a driveway extending from Colonel Glenn Road. A newly paved vehicular roundabout with landscaped island is just south of the entry gate with a loop drive to the 16 lease areas. The applicant will provide amenities on the site, including a container garden area, a common area with a fenced dog park, gazebo, walking trail, and then Elmwood Street, which runs along the east property line. This site will have access from that roadway, and there will be a management office, an EV charging station, trash collection area, and a mail kiosk. I'll let the applicant give you more details with respect to the, how the leases will be done. They do have minimum qualifications for the tiny homes, and also any more details about the amenities to be provided. This item was on the May 8th Planning Commission agenda. Staff did point out several deficiencies in the application, several things the applicant did need to address, and we do have a staff update. The applicant submitted a revised site plan and additional information to staff. The revised site plan and additional information addresses most of the technical issues raised by staff. As of this writing, the applicant has met with the fire department, and the site plan must comply with all fire department requirements prior to a building permit being issued. Staff does not support the requested PDR zoning. Staff does not feel the proposed use is appropriate. Staff's main objection is the transient nature of the use. The proposed use is most similar to a traditional mobile home park, and staff questions the viability of the proposed use. The front or north portion of the property is zone C3 commercial and designated as C commercial on the city's future land use plan. Staff believes that a commercial development would be most appropriate for this property, which fronts a principal arterial roadway. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PDR zoning.
Thank you. Good afternoon, please state your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Monica DeBro.
Okay, good afternoon, Dr. DeBro. And you can, at this time, make your presentation, or we do have several cards that are in opposition. You can defer your time and then come up afterwards.
I would prefer to speak now.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dr. Monica DeBro. I am also a travel nurse who travels to different states, and when I go to those states, I have to find housing for myself. And initially, my vision was just to own a tiny home so that I could use it to travel with, because sometimes it's difficult to find housing. I've been in housing where I've had to move quickly due to some of the other residents in the home. Some dealing with voodoo, some putting food, hair in my food. At one home, several of us got sick at one time while the person who was practicing outer limits did not get sick. So as I've been going through this, I thought, you know what, why just build a tiny home for myself to move from state to state as I shift every six to 12 months? Versus build a community where people who want to live in smaller spaces that are not trailer homes, but want to be able to move, such as myself is as a nurse, or a new graduate from college, a veteran who is looking for a space to live, a new widow, or someone who's just wanting to start out a new one life, instead of just buying a tiny home for myself as I shift in nursing. I want to build something in a community for others to be able to feel safe. This is a gated community that my architect and consultant, we have worked with. We have focused on the, making sure that we have a retaining wall prepared, and if, they have booklets as well as the updated site plan that we created for this. So we've made sure that we've met security measures for this, and I know the opposition is that it looks like a mobile home park. This is not a mobile home park. The new trend that's going around now is tiny home communities, and the key word is communities. We've built this in such a place, or we've developed a conceptual site plan in such a way, whereas again, residents will need to have key cards to get onto the property. It's not going to be a property where people can just walk onto it, or they can drive onto it. We have gated plan for a gated community with cameras for security. We have made sure that we have the availability for emergency vehicles to get into the property as such if needed. There are actually 12 tiny home pads for residents to bring their tiny home. And it's not going to be where they bring homes of different colors. We have our color scheme set up to where it will look like a modern home community. Each one will have a parking space, there's a community garden, a walking space, there's a gazebo where we can meet, and we do plan on having monthly meetings with our residents. We have a property management company who will be managing the property, ensuring that it is staying in a clean way for our residents. There will be four villas or guest villas if a family has family who wants to come and stay. These tiny homes can be any sizes. I have stayed in a tiny home community before in Florida, and the community, the residents of the community, they are collectively together, and they work together. With this project, we will bring new productivity into not only the neighborhood or the area, but also the city of Little Rock. We have a community garden there, and as I said, we have a retaining wall that we have connected with some people because we understand there's a concern about the creek that runs along the side of it. We have made sure that we got in contact with the correct people to ensure that our neighbors, our community people, that they are safe. We will have, we call them HOAs, but I call it ice cream social, where we will have rules and regulations in place for our residents. We will have, make sure that we have noise violations in place so that people are not just playing, you know, loud music and having parties and all of that. I understand that prior to this land becoming vacant, that there were 30 plus, mobile homes, I don't even have a word in my head anymore because I'm tiny homes on wheel. There were 30 plus mobile homes on this land stacked on top of each other. That is not what we're planning for this community. We plan on sticking to the numbers that we have there, so you don't have to worry about us adding in more tiny homes into the space, making it look like something that's not beautiful for the city of Little Rock. It will be a crime deterrent. Honestly, I've gone by there at night, and I've seen cars parked in the duck part of that, who knows what's happening? I can tell you what's happening when I go onto the property and I walk along it and I see used condoms. When I see underwear. So that's what's being allowed to happen on a property right now when we're trying to build something that's going to bring a positive versus something that's going to be a negative. Because who knows who's in the back of those cars at night when it's dark out there and nobody's watching? If I had a daughter, I definitely would not want this space available for that to be happening for her. I'm just giving you an example because I've seen the evidence on the property. The owner has seen the evidence on the property as well. So we have the security measures in place for that. From there, if there's concern about fires, there's a fire department one block away. There's also a sports complex that's one to two blocks away, so we're bringing in something new and something innovative. And as I said, it's going to bring new growth, new productivity into the community. Now, these tiny homes, the residents will have the opportunity to determine how they want their tiny home built. They can have it built where there's the bedroom on the lower level, because some people, as myself, living in one, I want my bedroom on the lower level. The upper level can be a loft. They have the choice of themselves to put it in there. It can come with toiletries, I mean, they'll not come with toiletries. It'll have toileting facilities for them, because all tiny homes are built with a toileting facility. They have a choice of whether they want to have laundry in there, or they can support the local laundromat and go to the laundromat and get their clothes washed. We're not trying to put something in this community that's going to bring down the value of the community. We want to bring value to the city of Little Rock. We want to bring value to your residents. I've stayed in houses with med students. Med students are looking for housing too while they go to school for their residency. I know travel nurses who travel with their tiny home and their families, and as travel nurses, we stay in places six months to a year. I'm on a contract right now in Baltimore. I flew down here just for this meeting. So we make a way, but I want to have a safe space for them to come as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeBro.
You're welcome.
At this particular time, we do have several cards in opposition, so at this time, I'm asking you, you can have a seat here in the front, or it's your seat you came in. So at this time, and then we may bring you back up for questioning if any of the commissioners have any questions, okay? So the first card that we have here is Jenny White. If you're available, please make your way to the podium. And I just want to remember, on each side, because we do have several cards here, that it's up to 20 minutes. So if you signed a card and you want to defer your time to somebody else, if y'all have a speaker or anything like that, you can defer your time to the speaker, okay? Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Wow, that was loud, okay. My husband and I have lived in that neighborhood for 30 years. We did not get the notification about it because we're not right on the street. However, when it was a mobile home park, we definitely felt the effects of that because all of that spills into our neighborhood. There were a lot of conflicting information and some that I just heard earlier, like 18 homes, 16 homes. Part of the application and what she just said is that they would have the homes available, but then the website says spaces for lease, and then they bring them in. So which, is there clarification on which one? Because anything on wheels means mobile to me. And yes, there is a ballpark across, but there's also a liquor store right across the street, and that was the problem before. Were residents going back and forth, back and forth across that street constantly? And it was a disruption for the entire neighborhood. And if you look in our neighborhood, and I'm sure across the city, any kind of rental space is not taken care of as well as homeownership. And we've already had all those problems in our neighborhood before. It says that there's going to be onsite management, but is that the same people that are going to be maintaining the grounds? Because it said they're going to hire a property management to maintain the grounds, but is that the same people that are on site? And how would they even vet that process of who rents out the space and who, which home property management? Because we've had problems with the property managers in our neighborhood also not doing what they're supposed to do. The website says that there will be, the spaces are for lease, and it shows you all the things that are included. But yet, when you look at the map of the place, it even, I was wondering about that for guest villa thing too. And I was like, is that like an Airbnb type of situation that's going to be in and out, in and out, in and out? And how can you maintain that it's really going to be for tenants' guests? If you look at the map, and if you look at the entire city map, that particular location is access to all of Azalea Place. It has access to, because there is a walkthrough, we live on the corner of Brandon and Eastwood. There is a walkthrough from Brandon over to Ascension and Valley Court. There is also a walkthrough from There is also a walkthrough from Brandon, which is directly behind the property, over to Melwood. So that's a very exposed location to all of the neighborhood existing. That's why it all spills out into all the other neighborhoods. I read all the spec- specifications for the tiny homes on wheels and that's great and all, but they, the brochures are very shiny and the website's very shiny. But if you look at other examples of those mod- same specifications, it could also be a converted camper on wheels, considered a tiny home now. Now it's labeled a tiny home. So we do an RV park. It just sounds. I looked at the examples of other um tiny home places and they looked great. But there was one, the one in Florida that they listed, it's also vacation rentals. Which I don't see anybody vacationing there. I just don't see how they're going to fit everything that they've got planned for that in that amount of space. So I don't know if there's really going to be eighteen, is there sixteen or is there twelve? There just seems a lot of inconsistencies. And our neighborhood has had enough. Historically, we all, we all breathe a big sigh of relief the day that trailer park got shut down. We can all speak for that because the home. Yes, and um we just ask that you please don't add another problem to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then uh next card we have here is Theodore Holmes. If you're available.
He wants to defer.
All right. Do I defer? Okay. The next is uh Hugh Woodward.
That's me. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I gotta get the nerves straightened out here. Look, I moved into this neighborhood in nineteen sixty-nine as a kid. I am the horse's mouth when it comes to this trailer park. I rode my bike around it when it had flowers around all the places and it was all nice and everything. That one, it was when I was fourteen, I graduated in nineteen seventy-four from Central High School. And but the time I graduated, it started to go down. Fortunately, as a kid, I didn't know I was gonna buy all three houses that run adjacent to this ditch that's been referred to behind my three properties, which are located at forty-seven sixteen Elmwood, forty-seven twelve Elmwood and forty-seven oh eight Elmwood. There's several concerns in regards to this place. And one of them is, I called a hundred and fifty-seven times to the police department. That was the ones I logged. Gunshots daily. That was daily. On the weekends, it was the guns of Navarone. Every, could not get the police department to get it stopped. The city got rid of this place and used probably a loophole. Because somebody got sick over there in that trailer park with sepsis and they declared it a health hazard. I watched them, the uni- tenants pull an eight-foot hog out of the back of a pickup. You know what they did with it? Alive and cut it up with a chainsaw. Now y'all think that's crazy? It happened, I promise you. This is the worst thing for our neighborhood. We have fifty-six houses in my neighborhood and y'all want to add sixteen more, what y'all call family. No family can live in no four-hundred-square-foot house. Of course, y'all realize these places have a loft. That's where you sleep, in the loft. That way, your living area down below gives you a lot more space. That's why everything is described in heist in some of these descriptions of these homes, that they can only be so many feet high, which is fourteen point nine, I believe. I was so fortunate as a young man in nineteen seventy-four to have my mother loan me six thousand five hundred dollars to buy my little house there at uh forty-seven sixteen, is my main note. Well, as time went on, I was able to buy the house next to me and then the house next to that. My tenants endured that. The ones, one group of them that I have endured that, they're not here today. All the gunshots, drugs. There was even a um, an assault on Elmwood Street right in front of my house with a board full of nails from somebody over there that was in that trailer park. This gentleman, Mr. Moore over here, just mentioned earlier that it is go- there to draw vagrants and other people. Well, let me tell you something. I don't see monthly on any of this. I see just because it's renting something does not mean you can rent it, that they're going to rent it by the month. They could just as easily rent it by the day or the week like Motel, whatever that is on Roosevelt. Anybody been down that way? That's what you're going to end up with. You will spend more money policing and going there via uh the code enforcement agency will be there because guess who's going to be calling? Me. I am not going to have this. And I've got about ten neighbors willing in. All of them are willing to throw in five hundred. And that is for a lawyer, if that is what's required. So I hadn't even gone over the beginning here. What is the number of people that can live in this house? If you call it a family, it could just as easily be five children. Is there a limit? Do y'all know that? I mean, y'all aren't going to answer my questions, but I mean, I have a lot of things here. One of them is, these units or these tiny houses were brought in uh in around two thousand five over the United States, you started hearing about them. And then they went kind of crazy in two thousand eight because of the high ci- housing crisis. That was the people's way out to get, get out of poverty and live in a house and maybe sell it and move on. Well, that hasn't, that's not what's going to happen. Are the age of these units twenty-twenty-fives? Or are they four or five thousand tra- of these houses built in two thousand, gone back over and repainted, fixed up? I'd buy me about, if I had a hundred thousand dollars, you buy you about forty of these. Or, I'm not forty, you buy you uh four or five thousand of these little old trailers and throw them on every city in the nation that is literally infested with homeless people. Who's, guess what these people are doing? Cash it in on the homeless in our neighborhood. I'm not going to have it. I don't know what else. Let me see here. This renting by the day, I hope my voice is being recorded so you guys can go back and see what I said. Their property managers and their security and all that stuff is going to be beautiful in the first two or three years. This lady here probably sell it by then. Cash in? Who's going to be there five years from now? A bunch of transients, dope dealers and guns showing off just like it was before. Nobody's going to be attracted to live because we live in an undesirable area that will draw undesirable people. As this man said right over here. I beg you guys, don't bring this back. I'm pleading with you guys to not approve the intrusion to our peaceful neighborhood. Please, whatever you do, do not approve this. Hey, approve a playground that's gated from morning till about eight o'clock when it gets dark. You could put a few uh uh those uh new tennis courts, uh whatever they call it. And uh you could put basketball goals, you could do a lot of things and probably not spend more than two million dollars, I bet.
The opposition has now seven minutes and forty-seven seconds.
Thank you.
Wow, I had no idea. Okay. First, my question is, is this for homeless people? Because you know we're building a four-hundred-unit air- uh four-hundred-unit tiny home area down on Roosevelt that is designed specifically for homeless people. We want that? No, we don't want that. Do y'all want to spend money policing this and sending code enforcement over there every other day trying to figure out who's living in? Oh, look, that one right there looks like it's got twenty-five people living there. You guys are the one that are going to have to live with the police coming there and the amount of money spent to keep this place from being what everybody in this room knows is going to happen. They will eventually be dilapidated and there will be trash and all that, but it may take five years. Who cares about five years from now when you can cash in right now on our neighborhood? That I forgot to say, fifty years is how long I've lived in my home. Fifty, anybody say that in here? Can anybody say they lived in the same place fifty years? I doubt it. I'm not going to be intruded. On, I'm about to run out of time, I'm sure. I knew I'd get fired up. Uh, that we cannot have an entrance to this place on Brandon, which is right in front of this gentleman's house. You can't have an entrance from there. That road is a dead-end road and peaceful. This neighborhood only has two entrances, one on Marborough, one on Elmwood Drive. So, ladies and gentlemen, that's the best I can do. All I can do is say, don't do it because it's not for the betterment of this city. And I know I see better people than that stand, sitting right here. They wouldn't put that on anybody anywhere. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. The next uh card we have is Evelyn Holmes.
Okay, she won't say a little word. This is her, his wife, and he lives on Brandon Street. She's fought these people since, I lived there from seventy-four to now, she lived there from ninety-eight to now.
We have five minutes remaining.
Mr. Woodward, we, we, no, we, we thank you, but we want to make sure we maintain order.
I give up, sorry.
Uh, Mrs. Holmes, can you, you can move the uh microphone down.
My name is Evelyn Holmes.
Yes.
And I live directly behind the property that you're talking about, that we're speaking of today. And I was there when the trailer park was there. Now, when I moved there, I contacted the city and they told me that the trailer park would be gone. Not long, it would be gone. That's the reason we bought it. But it didn't leave right then. It took a while for them to leave, long time. Okay, and I don't want anything else in there like the trailer park. I don't mind stuff coming in there, but I don't, I don't want anything like that. So every day and night, I was calling the police. I even went over there. All that music and all that everything was over there. I went over there, talked to those people, tried to get things stopped. I don't want to have to do that again. I ain't got too old, I was young then. I done got too old to be going over there trying to get them to stop and cut out some of this music and stop this shooting and stop all this. So I don't want anything in there like that. I want something in there that peaceful. I don't want to be called in the police day and night. I done got too old with that kind of stuff and my nerves done got too bad. And I don't plan to leave my home. I don't plan to sell and move. I'm eighty, I'd be eighty-two years old to come to August eighth. And I plan to stay there until the good Lord come and get me. I don't want to have to move and go no place else. So, and I don't want to put up with the gunfights, guns and people's fighting and all kinds of stuff like that. I don't want to have to put up with that. So I don't want a lot of stuff in there because the way I see it, that ain't too much better than the trailer park that was in there. Because this, I'm sorry, lady, but this lady be going back up there to a state that she's in. And it might be nice and everything for a while, but after a while, people go turn bad and they be doing some everything, especially. I know I used to rent property to peoples. Shoot, but I was the type of person, I was nosy. I'd go over there and check on my property and they still tried to do everything that they could do. And I told, let me tell you something, I put the police on you. That's what I'll do. So I know what people to do if you're not there watching. So when she go back home, people going to do whatever they want to do. And I live directly behind that property. Now, I want to see them put something in there, but not nothing like that where it'll be almost like the trailer park again. Uh-uh, don't want that. I want something that I can have some peace, the little time that I do have left on this earth. So I hope that something will go in there like that. So I don't want to take up too much of the time and have a lot to say, which I don't have too much meaning. So I have a lot to say, I just want to let you all know that. I hope that something go in there where I won't have to be getting up during the night, listening to gunfight, listening to music, all that stuff. I want to be able to sleep when I go to bed at night. Thank you all, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. What's the time that we have on this?
We have one minute, twelve seconds.
All right, so we have one other card, uh Ron Carter, if you're present.
I will make it, excuse me, let me try. I'll make it short. First off, I'm sure everyone sitting on this panel understand the word semantics. When you have a quote residence that is on wheels that can be moved in and moved out, that is a mobile home. I do understand that it can be managed, but I also understand there's nothing restricting Dr. DeBro from giving up this property in a short amount of time and then it'll change. By the way, I do understand what you said about the long-term situation. When I moved there in December of ninety-five, uh, the um trailer park wasn't that bad. The man who owned it died and sold it to a person who had absolutely no interest in making it nice.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, if we can bring uh the applicant back up, Dr. DeBro. Um, so at this particular time, I know there were several um concerns that they had. So at this particular time, what I would like to do is, I want to go ahead and just open the floor up to any of the commissioners. If they have any questions or comments, uh, at this particular time, the floor is open. I guess I'll start. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, so a couple of questions. In your presentation, and this goes back to some of the, some of the, some of the applicants said, or some of the, some of the opposition said, I can't tell from what you said and what's written, are people going to buy this, buy the tri- buy the homes? Are you renting them? Are you renting the spots? There's conflicting info. What's really going to go on in this, in this, in this location?
Thank you for your question. It has always been said that we're renting out the pads. We're not providing homes. The people will build their own homes or not build their own homes, but they will work with the manufacturer to build their homes. We're renting out the pads. The minimum lease is one year.
Okay. So with that then, and I guess this, my next question is to staff, is I know there's that big uh place over just on the other side of the bridge in Little Rock where they have a lot of, and a lot of the travel nurses do stay there, where they've got that going on. Is there anything like this in the city limits? Because I don't think there's anything like this in the city limits, city limits anywhere in Little Rock.
Not that I, uh, that we know of. Commissioner Brown, uh, think this would be probably the first tiny homes on wheels we have.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I thought. Now, I'm going to ask a really kind of, and I'm trying to think of the nicest way to ask this because you told us you're from Baltimore. You live in Baltimore. You're not from, why are you doing this here?
I am from Arkansas.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so let me clarify that. I'm from Arkansas. I was born and raised in Little Rock.
Okay.
I got my first nursing degree from the University of Arkansas at Little Rock. I have been a dean of nursing schools. I'm taking a break from being the dean, from leadership in academia, to reset myself. And to do that, I'm doing travel nursing until December and then I'm going to move back here.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and I gotta be real honest with you, I'm having a hard time being unbiased on this because I literally grew up a stone stove, like the, the so-called sports complex across the street. I played ball there as a kid. And I know what And I know what's going on there. I'm really nervous about this guy. I mean, I usually, I, most questions, I usually don't sway folks, but this one, this makes me nervous and I'm, I'm not, I'm, there's too many questions here. This is, this is, I'm very nervous about this. I'm willing to listen, but I feel like the risk that this is gonna put on the neighborhood, particularly since it's gonna be, we don't know, unless there are a lot more structure around it, and plus, if staff feels it's not good to go, then that, it makes me, I'm not good with this, so.
Alright, thank you. Uh, other questions from any of the commissioners?
I, I had just one for staff. I missed it. I know you guys said what this was zoned at the beginning, but what, what is this zoned?
The, the front, uh, probably half or so of the property is on C-three commercial and the south, southern portion is R-two, single family.
Alright, uh, Dr. DeBro, uh, a couple of concerns we're discussing about the property management and then the, I guess, uh, leasing options on there. Could you kind of speak a little bit more to that so we can have a better understanding on these two, uh, issues? Uh, I guess you can start with the property management. Who take care of the property, or the, the land, yard, et cetera?
Absolutely.
And after that, you can talk about the, the leasing options or how that's done.
Perfect. I have, um, connected with a property management company. I've rented property before and their responsibility not only is to make sure that the ground stay maintained, but to make sure that also that the homeowners are doing what they're supposed to do to maintain the community as well. This is not just a fly-by-night throw something in the air that we've created. Um, the property management company will also be focused on ensuring that we have the security measures in place. Uh, we have had meetings with, um, um, people for gating to make sure that we have different options for that as well. The leasing option, again, one-year minimum lease is what we're requiring. This will prevent houses from coming in and out of the property every couple of months as they would want to choose.
Okay, alright, good. Um, do we have any other questions from any other commissioners? And I would like to say this to, uh, Dr. DeBro, I know we stated this earlier. Uh, because we do not have a, a full, uh, we have, uh, I think a few of our members are not present today. Uh, you can defer until next, uh, meeting. But if you would like to move forward, obviously we can, obviously vote today. But we just wanted to let you know that, uh, before, beforehand, before we vote.
Do I have a second to speak to my consultant right quick?
Sure.
Okay.
In between time, I've got a question for staff, uh, clarity. Um, on the items, uh, failed to be provided, I think there's a list of thirteen of them. Is that, was that upon the original, uh, submission of this application or is that current, like, to date?
No, that, that was in the May agenda, and since that time, the applicant has addressed th- those issues.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Chair, excuse me, I have a question for staff as well. So, this is currently, the, the front of the lot, the north side of the lot is commercial. The south side of the lot is RL, residential low. And then, okay, so two thousand thirteen, what, what was it zoned when there was a trailer park? I, I guess, has, has the zoning changed since then?
I don't believe the zoning has changed since that time.
So, that RL?
Yes, it did change.
Okay. So, it could have been a different form of residential, switched to residential low. Is there any way to determine how many single-family homes, again, obviously the front's gonna be commercial, something inconvenient, store, small retail, something like that? But how many homes could be built on the back part of the lot? Is there any way of knowing that?
Uh, not without having a fairly good acreage description of that rear area.
Sure. Thanks. Alright.
Dr. DeBro?
After speaking with my consultant, which I had already made the decision of, um, can I address a couple of things real quick?
Sure.
If the neighbors in this community wanted to see this as a park or wanted to see it as something else, why have they not taken the time to purchase the land to do that? This land has been vacant for ten years. If they wanted to see something specific in this, on this particular land, why not purchase it? But now that someone is coming in with something that is positive, that is not going to be a trailer park, that is unmanaged, we get this feedback. And even before speaking to my, and the, the home in Florida, the, the land in Florida, it is a mixture. It has eight res, eight um, properties or tiny homes that are for rent. The rest of them are residents. I know the owner of that property personally because I've stayed there. So, it's not just for vacation rentals. I want to clear that up. But the main thing is, after listening to the residents and the anger behind this project, I am choosing to pull it. I would rather take my project, something that I'm passionate about, that I know is gonna be a positive vision. I would rather take it somewhere else to where my residents don't have to deal with this anger. Because I would not put a community of people that I trust, because I know my value and I know the value of the people that I will put in these homes or were allowed to rent a pad. But I won't bring it to a neighborhood full of angry people. I just refuse to do it. That's not the lifestyle I lived. I've lived a lifestyle of domestic violence. I've been beaten. I've been stabbed. I've been shot at. I don't want to bring anybody into a neighborhood where they have to worry about if I come into the neighborhood just with my music a little bit louder, somebody's gonna call the police. Or if my grandkids are here and the ball goes over the gate, which this is gonna be a fully gated community. So, no, you're not gonna have the opportunity to just walk in and out of this community. I don't want to bring my business into a neighborhood with residents who are gonna be angry like this. So, I'm volunteering. After we spent thousands of dollars on civil engineers, thousands of dollars on architects, I won't bring my vision into this community with angry people who that I have to worry about until I move back here in December. Are they gonna call the police because a ball went over the fence? Are they gonna call the police because somebody's having a, a minor get-together? I won't do it. This would have been a positive influence for this community. It would have brought money into this community. But if they can't see the vision and I gotta be worried about my residents getting bullied, I won't do it. I will find land somewhere else because there's plenty of land that I can purchase that I don't have to worry about this. So, I thank you all for your time. I thank you for listening, but I'm personally pulling because I won't do this to my residents.
Okay, before you depart, uh, Dr. DeBro, I just want to communicate with staff or maybe legal. Uh, if she's pulling it, I mean, uh,
If, if the applicant makes a request to withdraw the application, that's her request and you need to take a vote on it, on that request.
Okay, so we need to get a motion for the applicant?
A motion to withdraw the application.
Okay, alright, so I would definitely entertain a motion, uh, for the applicant to withdraw.
Mr. Chair, make a motion on behalf of the applicant to withdraw the request in item Z-dash-one-zero-one-five-four.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Uh, make a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person? Russell? Samad?
Yes.
Trimble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
The motion's been approved to withdraw the item.
And Dr. DeBro, uh, definitely thank you for submitting your application and, uh, every, even the community coming out. We try to address concerns. We try to make everybody happy. Of course, unfortunately, that doesn't happen. Uh, something in the future, any other developments to look forward to, I'm sure the planning and development staff would be, uh, on call and, and waiting for other projects.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move, uh, right along here to item number five. Here's Z-dash-one-zero-one, one-eight dash eight. If the applicant is present. And before the applicant come up, I would just give just a, just a few seconds so that, uh, that anyone needs to depart, they can. Alright.
Thank you all.
Alright, is the applicant present? Are you the ap, you the applicant for item number five? Okay. Yes, yes. Make your way to the podium, please. And while you're making your way, we will have the reading. Uh, Monty, if you will.
Item number five, file number Z-ten-thousand-one-eighteen-A. This is the Fuentes Multisexual Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit within the eighty-eight-hundred block of Bunch Road. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow for the placement of a double-wide multisexual manufactured home on the property. A single-wide manufactured home previously, that was previously located on the property has been removed. The applicant proposes to place a sixteen-foot by eighty-foot double-wide manufactured home near the southeastern corner of the property. The applicant will extend the driveway from Bunch Road to provide parking for at least one parking space for the residents. The applicant is not proposing to place any accessory structures on the property at this time. The applicant notes that, uh, the manufactured home will comply with all required setbacks regarding the addition of any porches, stairs, or decks. The site plan shows a front setback of approximately a hundred feet, and it'd be from the north or front property line, approximately forty feet from the rear or south property line, twenty feet from the east side property line, and over a hundred and fifty feet from the west side property line. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues with this application. Staff is supportive of the requested CUP to allow multisexual manufactured home on the property. Staff views the request as reasonable. Uh, staff feels that a multisexual manufactured home will not be out of character with this area. It contains large tracts of land, and some of the properties in the general area appear due to contain manufactured homes. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP to allow the manu, multisexual manufactured homes subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the manufactured home minimum siting standards is noted in section thirty-six-two-fifty-four-D-five of the city zoning ordinance and compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D-E-N-F and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Ruth Fuentes.
Alright, Ms. Fuentes, um, here, um, we do have a couple of cars that's in opposition. Uh, but you can, uh, present now or you can defer your time and then come up afterwards. It's your choice.
That's fine. I really don't have much to say, you know.
Okay, well, if you, well, if you like now, you can go ahead and speak and then we can bring up, uh, any, uh, cars in opposition. So, the floor is yours.
Like I say, I really don't have much to say. You just can't.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, in that case, you can have a seat right here.
Okay.
And then we'll bring you back up here momentarily, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so we have two cars that are in opposition. The first car is, uh, Evelyn Fulton.
Evangeline.
Excuse me?
Evangeline Fulton.
My apologies. Evangeline Fulton. Ms. Fulton, Mrs. Fulton, please. Uh, the floor is yours.
And my name is Evangeline Louise Bunch Fulton. I have lived on this property, excuse me, for over, or my family has for over a hundred years. And to have someone for some reason wants to put a mobile home in there when I myself had been denied five or six times? I had one in there for thirty-five years. I had to have it moved, or excuse me, the city made me move it because it was old and rundown. Okay? My question is, why does this lady get to put one in there? And every time I call, no, you cannot have anything on wheels with a tongue. Okay, excuse me, that's exactly what she's moving in. Why does she get preference over other people on this road? That's a single-lane road that the fire trucks, the garbage people can't even go down and turn around because of the dead-end street where she's planning to put this mobile home. Okay? We had an emergency at our house. We had to have ambulance come pick someone up out of my house. Uh, Culture Lake Road and Bunch Road intersect at the beginning of my property across the street. The ambulance couldn't even back down to my house to pick up the person that was injured. They had to take the cart or whatever they call that thing, the gurney, and roll it down the street and pick them up and push it into the ambulance at the other side. Okay, you tell me, that street has not been widened since my family, over a hundred years ago, lived there. It's still the same width, which is a single lane that when two people come down that street, you have to pull over into what we call a ditch. But it's really not a ditch. It's just a ball of mud coming down the road. I'm sorry, I get emotional about this. But we cannot have all this traffic a multi-section home. I didn't even ask for a multi-section home. I asked for a single wide. But I was denied more than once. My father lived on that property, Herman Bunch. He had a single wide on that property. When he died, it was moved off. But no, you can't replace another home there, a mobile home. There's a whole acre of land there. You cannot replace anything with wheels and a tongue. Why? My question is, why does this person get special treatment that doesn't even know or live in the neighborhood? Why is she getting special treatment when other people that even live at the end of the street wasn't even notified that she was moving in? I wouldn't notify that she was moving in. And like I said, I've lived there all my life. I was born on that property. So, I think it's unfair to have someone that has more money or more clout to be given special privileges when other people are not allowed to have the same kind of courtesy to have a mobile home put on the property. I don't understand. I have five acres and there is a barn that's sixty-five years old. There's a shop where my father used to do his paint and bodywork, and there's my house, which we live in now because they took our mobile home away. So, you tell me, why everybody on this board thinks she's privileged enough to have a house? I'm being a mobile home there. It is very confusing. And it's irritating to know that nobody thinks of anybody else except somebody that's got money and influence. You know, there are people that live on that property in the area that rent homes. There's a man that specifically builds homes to rent and sell. We have a nice neighborhood. We have a, down the street about two miles, they're gonna put in a five-hundred-acre, what should I say? Tiny home villa. Okay, that's five-hundred acres that we could almost see from where I live. Okay, we are approximately, um, I would say a half a mile from the city limits of Little Rock and Pulaski County. Okay, they came out and put in a walking path down below our house, across the city limits, for you to have a bike-riding accessory to the different cities and country around the area, so you can have a whole lane to do your biking on. Okay? That's a waste of money. Why don't y'all build a street that two cars can come down, a fire truck can come down, and an ambulance to come down, instead of wasting money on something for somebody else to put in a mobile home and nobody else can do anything about it? I don't understand. My time, I'll give it to somebody else.
Thank you. The next car we have is Lisa Jen, if I'm saying that correctly. And please come to the podium and you can, uh, correct that statement if it's wrong.
It's Jen.
Okay.
Um, I'm speaking on behalf of being the president for the Neighborhood Association and all of the residents. And all of the residents that I've spoken to, not only on Bunch Road, Culture Lake Road, and Castle Valley, Whispering Pines, were in opposition. Ms. Fulton is correct, it's a one lane road. We can't have normal recycle pickup because the recycle truck won't drive down our road. Ambulance, fire trucks, if they come in, they back out. We don't have good emergency services in that area. What we do have currently is only two mobile homes in that area. One is being condemned currently because it's uninhabitable, and the other one was brought in during a time when everyone else on the road was being told they had to move theirs out, or they couldn't replace theirs with another one. Ms. Fulton's not the only one that was told that she could not replace her mobile home with another one. We've had several, and that came from the city of Little Rock. I know that the neighbors that had joined this property were not notified of this meeting tonight, and they didn't fill out a card because they were under the impression Mr. Throw told them that he had their information. So if they are allowed to speak, even though they didn't fill out a card for tonight, I will defer the rest of my time to them.
All right. Normal practice, we'd like to make sure we keep, you know, order and structure.
Right.
Uh, that they need to fill out a card, but if you're going to yield, uh, your time, I will allow, um, oh, I guess, uh, whatever, I don't know how many is speaking, but I will allow, will allow one speaker to come up.
Okay. I'll defer the rest of my time.
For, uh, your amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
And good afternoon, madam. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Ginger Wimberly.
All right, Ms. Wimberly.
And I live adjacent to the property that we're here for. We were not notified of the meeting. I mean, it's right to the west of our house. There's nothing between us and that property except woods. We received one certified letter back in May. I think this has been going on since January. Maybe it was canceled for various reasons. I know they have changed the plans numerous times. They have changed location twice, from our west to the south of our property. We're the only property touching hers. And, um, we had received one certified letter in May, period. Nothing on this, our neighbors will receive notice in the mail, not certified, just regular mail. And if they didn't give us the information, we wouldn't even know about the hearing. Uh, so that's a concern. I think our main concern is, as was stated, the fire department. Bunch Road, as they said exactly, is a really a one lane street. Our house is at the end of the road that, where the pavement starts. And they have come in and opened up a grown up area and made like a dirt road to get to that property. That road used to be open years ago. There was a trailer down there, and it was used, but it's not paved. It's a dirt road. So it had totally grown over where it was not passable. And when, uh, they bought the property, they took all the brush out and cleared it, but it's not really wide because of property to their north is not their property, so they couldn't go real wide. But it's, I guess our main concern is the fire hydrant that is not too far from our property, right on Bunch Road. Uh, there is a fire hydrant there, but as stated, a fire truck could not get down to that property. If it went on, if it caught on fire, not only would that property probably burn, but ours might, because there's woods all around us. And when they bought the property, they cleared some trees off of their property, which is where they planned this first site to put the mobile home, whatever it is, multistructural home. So there's a huge pile of trees and brush that they cleaned out. And our major concern is, what if that catches on fire? Or what if they planned to burn that with nothing but wooded areas totally surrounding that site? I can only imagine if a fire got loose. And I don't think the fire department can get down there. I just don't think. It, in your literature, it said the road needs to be twenty six feet wide. That road might be fifteen or so. It, I don't think a fire department, I don't know if y'all have contacted the fire department, or if the fire department's been out there, but their truck can't go down there. So that's our biggest concern. We don't have a problem with having a neighbor. It just has to be properly done so that we're all gonna be safe. I don't know any other issue we have other than, I guess we were concerned when it came out because it sounded like the board had already approved this, and, uh, we didn't even receive notification of the meeting to come and talk about it like we are today.
No, that's why we're here now.
Pardon me?
I think the staff may have made a recommendation.
So it's not approved until you vote?
No, we're here now. That's, we're voting on this today. Yes.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, no, the staff just make recommendations.
Okay.
And that's it. And then the commission here, the board, we review it, and then we vote on it.
Okay.
So it's not approved yet, but we, uh, thank you for your, uh, addressing your concerns. Yes, yes. And then obviously, it goes to the Little Rock, uh, it goes to the city board, and then which has the final approval.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, um, so we want to bring the applicant back up. Monty, did you have something?
Uh, this is a conditional use permit. You have the final authority on conditional use permit. It can be appealed to the board, but as far, it doesn't go to the board automatically.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, uh, so, uh, we've heard opposition here. What I want to do at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any of the commissioners that have any questions or statements, uh, for this. And I guess more so for the, uh, staff. I did have a couple of questions for the staff real quick. I don't know the, um, is it Ms. Wimberly? Yes, I don't know your exact address, and you don't have to give it, but all of the letters were sent out, because I know it's so many feet from it.
The notices weren't done correctly, basically, the information we have.
Okay.
And, uh, the name Wimberly was one of the notices that went out.
Okay, all right.
And you can only send five, and you know, I pretty much own everything around it, so, but I know I sent the one to Ms., Ms. Wimberly, or whatever her last name is. It was, because I brought it back.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, that was more of a staff question. Okay.
Oh, my bad.
That, that's what I'm, and then, uh, my second question for staff is, uh, everything as far as, you know, meeting all the, the policies or the rules, uh, the regulations for the city, uh, was all of that met for this particular?
All, all of the procedure was, was properly, uh, followed.
Okay.
For the application.
That's my two questions.
And that, and that, can I, can I add to that?
Yes, please.
The statements were made about not being able to, 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 uh, put manufactured homes on properties. No, you can't. The city of Little Rock, you cannot put a manufactured home, double wide or single wide, by right on a piece of property. You have to go through an application process. Ms. Fuentes was not told she could put one there. That's why she's before you, going through the application process to seek approval to do her manufactured home.
Okay. And Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
To follow up to that, to staff, as I'm looking at this application, there's a comment about wheels and a tongue and things like that, is I'm reading this application, as of twenty twenty five, if you put a manufactured home on a property that says they have all, like, all the, it has to have a foundation, wheels to be removed, so it's not like, it's not a mobile, mobile home, it's a prefabricated home that can't be moved once it's there without a whole lot of trouble. Is that what I'm reading?
That is correct. It is, it is, it is a, it is a manufactured home that's made permanent on the property.
All right.
Okay, and then also, I, I wanted to address a, because I think, um, uh, it was Mrs., uh, Mrs. Bunch Fulton, she had a question, I mean, when she had made a statement that they, and I presume they mean the city, would not let her have a manufactured home or a mobile home, i.e., on her property. If she wanted to have a mobile home on her property, she would need to go through the same process. Is that correct?
That, that, well, it, it, it could be different. Uh, single wide manufactured homes require a rezoning of a property.
Okay.
Your multi-sectional manufactured homes can be allowed with a conditional use permit.
Gotcha.
Now, also, it, you have to, uh, look at what's on the property. If there's already a house on the property, then you can do a single wide or a double wide as a conditional use permit as an accessory dwelling. If there happens to be more than one house on the property, and you want to put a third house on the property that's a manufactured home, then you're gonna have to rezone the property to probably a planned development.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure, because we wanted to make sure, and we, we, I, I want to address it right now, Ms. Fulton, but I, if you have questions on that, then after this meeting...
I'm sorry, you saved one sentence.
Well, hold on, because we, we need to come back, come up, come up to the podium, so we can make sure we got all this on the record. Uh, if you will, applicant, just, uh, can you have a quick seat?
I'm sorry, that mobile home that was on the property was grandfathered to Ian.
Okay.
And like I said, it lasted thirty five years.
No, we understand, and that's why I wanted to ask this question for you, particularly you, and we, you know, we, we appreciate you coming out.
No one told me of any of the procedure. They just said, no, you can't do it.
No, I understand, and that's why after this meeting is over, if you want to get with one of the staff personnel, we want to make sure we can address your concerns, or if you want to do something on your property, we want to make sure you have all the facts, and you know how, and you know how to get this process done, okay?
It would have been nice, who, at the planning board, whoever answered the phone would give you that information instead of just saying, no, won't happen.
No, we completely understand, but after the meeting, we want to make sure that we can get you with a personnel or a staff, that we can make sure we can address your concerns, and make sure you have the right processes, okay?
I wouldn't have to build a house.
Well, I'm just saying, just, just for future reference, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, applicant, if you will, come back up to the, uh, podium. Before we vote, I want to make sure that if any of the commissioners had any other questions or statements, if not, I would love to entertain a motion.
This chair make a motion that we approve staff's recommendations in file number Z dash one zero one one eight dash A, subject to compliance with the manufactured home minimum siding standards and all other comments and announces from staff in the agenda report. Second.
Have a motion in second. May I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person? Russell? Samot?
Yes.
Trimble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Thank you, applicant, for coming out today.
Thank you so much.
And thank you all for coming out on this issue. Uh, we're gonna give just a few seconds, uh, for any departures. And, uh, our last item on the regular agenda is item number ten, Z dash one oh one seven zero. Is the applicant present? All right, please make your way to the podium, and while you're making your way, uh, Monty, if you will, uh, provide the reading.
Item number ten, file number Z ten thousand one seventy. This is the Vong STR two PDC located at eight Turtle Creek Court. The applicant proposes to rezone this, uh, point, point two zero acre property located at eight Turtle Creek Court from R two to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental with a maximum stay of twenty nine days. The owner will not reside in the residence, and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property is occupied by thirteen hundred and fourteen square foot, one-story, three-bedroom, two-bath house. The property has a two-car garage with, and enough driveway space for four additional vehicles. Uh, the proposed parking plan does conform to ordinance requirements. This property's been in operations as short-term rental since October twenty twenty four, and to staff's knowledge, there have been no Department of Planning and Development enforcement cases nor any police reports for this property. City of Little Rock currently has a hundred and twenty five approved short-term rentals, so it's a combination, combination of STR ones and twos. And as we've, uh, stated many times in the past, the city's short-term rental ordinance allows a maximum of five hundred within the corporate boundary of Little Rock. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs E and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Hung Vong.
All right, Mr. Vong, uh, you can now present, uh, now, if you will, or you can defer your time. There are several cars in opposition, and then you can come back afterwards. Uh, the choice is yours. Would you like to speak now, or would you like to come back after?
After.
After, okay.
Yes.
Please have a seat, and then I will go through the cars. First car here is Suzie Harrison. Uh, and if you don't want to speak, you can defer your time to, if you have a main speaker or anything like that, you can defer your time if you'd like. Okay. Yeah, if all the time has not elapsed, uh, then definitely, okay. Are you the main speaker?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, hold on, I got, and what's your name?
Jacqueline Davino.
Okay, one, one second here. Uh, I got Pamela Rather, did you want to speak? Okay, and then we have, uh, Caesar Davino? You defer your time, okay? And George, uh, Tony, defer, okay? All right, great, all right. Jacqueline Davino, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, board. Um, my name is Jacqueline Davino. I'm here today to represent the residents of Turtle Creek Court regarding the proposed rezoning of the home at number eight Turtle Creek Court for use as a short-term rental. Many of the residents have, have signed, uh, this, I believe you guys have a copy of their note of opposition, since several, several of the neighbors could not be here today. Um, they did want to voice their opposition, even though they could not be here by, by signing this, uh, document. Many of our neighbors, including myself, have lived on this street for over twenty five years. Um, my family has been on this streets, uh, for twenty seven years. It is a cul-de-sac, so that means there's only one way in and one way out. You gotta go all the way to the bottom of the cul-de-sac, which is where I live, and make a circle and come back up. Our neighborhood is a very family-oriented community. We value the stability, safety, and community, and we believe allowing a short-term rental would fundamentally change that dynamic, that character of our street. As I said before, it's a, this is a residential neighborhood. There's no commercial anything on our street. There's no, you know, commercial businesses or anything like that. We're, we're a residential home. This would, uh, if he is, if this board approves of the short-term rental, we are concerned about, uh, security and safety on our street. Um, the, being that there would be, they, I think you said, a maximum of twenty nine days for rental, um, there's gonna be a lot of turnover of occupants, so it's gonna be hard for us to know, hey, who's, who's living on our street for these, you know, three days, ten days, I don't know, twenty nine days, you know? We, we don't know who's gonna be living on our street. We have several, um, families with small children. Um, the children, I see them walk up to get to the bus stop right at the top of our street, and they get off the bus stop, and I see them walk down the street to get back to their home after school. Um, so we have concerns about that. Um, we have concerns about traffic and congestion. I know they've, um, appropriated that they can have how many cars accommodate, um, for parking, but we are concerned about the increase in, uh, congestion and traffic coming down that street. We have garbage trucks and our own emergency vehicles that need to get in and out. We have two, two firefighters and a MEMS, uh, department worker that live on our street. They need to be able to get out and do their jobs. We are also concerned about, um, transience. You know, we don't know, like I said, who's gonna be in this property. Um, right now, we, we're pretty much a very close-knit community. You know, we know our neighbors. I, I can name my neighbors by name, uh, you know? So we're, we're very concerned about having people come in that we don't know. Another, um, concern is a decrease in property values. If this is a short-term rental, then this could possibly discourage, um, long-term homeowners from coming into our neighborhood and lower our property values. Another concern is noise, disruption. Um, we do have a concern because the homeowner, Mr. Vong, um, who I know, and we've, we've talked, he's a great guy, I, you know, we've, we know him. Um, but we are concerned because he lives in Ma-Mell. He previously was leasing this, um, home, not as a short-term, but I believe as a long-term rental, and for probably the better part of two years. There was a family who was, I guess, contracted to be in that house, but then we kept seeing all kinds of people come in and going from that house. There must have been at least three or four families at one time that were coming and going. So, um, you know, that, that caused a lot of disruption on our street, um, because of, uh, kind of some shady activity. Maybe one of the other neighbors can, can address that to you. uh, kind of some shady activity. Maybe one of the other neighbors can, can address that to you. Um, but we always saw new people, uh, coming in, going from that house, and we didn't know what they were doing. They were, you know, making a lot of noise, uh, they'd be hanging out in their driveway, working on their cars or whatever, I don't know. Our concern is that he doesn't live in our neighborhood. Mr. Vong does not live in our neighborhood. He lives in Mamel. He, he was not aware with the previous tenants that he had that they were allowing other family members or friends, whoever, to stay in their house. And he basically, when I met him, admitted that he, his, his house had been trashed. He had no idea because whoever he was using to manage the property wasn't keeping up with it. He didn't know that his house was being, you know, abused, basically. And he's spent the better part of two years fixing up this house so that he can now, hopefully, if he gets your vote, um, he can use it as a short-term rental. So we have concerns that, um, as a property manager, who's going to be managing this? And is it going to be, you know, left to, to a group, or is he going to come personally and, and be, you know, active in managing the property? Because the previous owners, he was not aware of any of this that was going on. And, um, so we, we are very concerned about that. I'm going to open this up to anybody else from our, um, neighborhood who would like to speak, but on behalf of all of our neighbors and all of those who have signed this opposition, we respectfully ask that you deny this zoning request. We, we want to maintain our family community. And we, like I said, a lot of us have been on this street for twenty-five plus years. We all know each other. We look out for each other. If I'm going out of town, you know, so-and-so knows, hey, the Davinos aren't home, keep an eye on the house. Um, or our neighbor across the street, their dog gets out. Well, you know, I'll go grab the dog and take care of it until they can, you know, come home and get their dog. We all look out for each other. And so that's what we're doing today, and we're asking you to deny this request. So I will leave this open to any of my other, um, neighbors here who would like to speak.
Thank you. All right, um, and thank you for your comments. Now, we do have several cards here, and we want to make sure if you have it on the, if you filled out a card here, there, there is time left. If you would like to make a statement, you can. It's not mandatory, but if you, you would like to, you can. Yes, and what is your name, sir? Did you, and you filled out a card?
I filled out.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I see you here.
I just wanted you guys to know, and I'm, let me quit. There's nineteen names on here in our neighborhood that have opposed this. So this is not, three or four, it's nineteen.
Well, the numbers go up to twenty-five, so that'll tell you how many people have signed this.
Thank you.
They're in house number twenty-five, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else would like to make a statement here?
Yes.
All right. All right. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm really. Okay, I'm Suzie. Hi, everybody. Thanks for listening. I'm very nervous because when he rented it before, you're saying that there was no police reports. Maybe not for the last two years. There has got to be police reports. We had two people move because there was drug transactions going on in the garbage can of, of the previous tenants that Jackie talked about. There was just like three people who moved in. I don't know how many people signed the lease on the, when you had it as a rental.
I want to make.
Just one person.
Yeah, I want to make sure we can kind of address the board.
Oh, yes.
And we can bring them up. If you have questions, we can address the applicant.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, you, you're fine.
Just like one person, but then there was like nine people living there. And it was like, what's to say that's not going to happen again? Because, you know, it was awful. I mean, people moved off our street who had been there for a while and it, and transient people, you, you don't know if they have records, you don't know if they're sex offenders, you don't know what kind of people they are. Because whoever he rented with before, I think it was RPM, didn't do a good job of vetting. And then, you know, he came to this house that was totally demolished. And so he's been working on it for about a year and three-quarters or two years, so you're not going to have any police presence. And then we have, um, our firefighters that live at the end of the street, MEMS that live kind of not too far down, and it's, it's a little street, and it's really hard for, you know, those big trucks to get down and stuff like that. And you don't really know how many cars are going to be parked there. And I know he has a person, you know, who he's going to do a VRBO through. But please, just do not vote on passing this because we've already had terrible experience with this house already. As a, you know, so I don't, there is no, uh, it's just, it hasn't been an accountable house. Transients are not accountable people. The grass, everything was nasty, you know, it was just gross. And I like my neighborhood, and I've lived there the same amount as Jackie, twenty-seven years. And so I'm very, very concerned. And I walk every day too, like, you know, six in the morning, and I feel safe. And I didn't feel safe when those people lived there at all. So I'm worried. And thank you for listening and have a nice evening.
Thank you. All right, we'll ask to bring the applicant back up. Mr. Vong?
Oh, someone else, do we still have a minute?
Yes. Well, no, if you don't fill out a, if you don't fill out a card, but I will allow for the, if we come up for one minute. Uh, you please come up, uh, state your name for the record and for, you got, you have one minute.
I'm Eric Jackson, and I am the firefighter member that they speak of. And I can speak to my personal experience with the last family they had. There was actual damage done to my property. They had people that would, we're attached to Napa Valley as well. So what they would do, they would jump over my fence to come down our neighborhood, and they were caught multiple times to the point that I had to put cameras and locks on my fence and didn't feel safe. And for me to be a firefighter and I had to be away from my home from twenty-four to forty-eight hour, what I knew scheduled forty-eight hours now, the safety of my neighborhood is very important to me. And I do have neighbors that I feel comfortable with. I am able to call them about everything. But when you have your camera just going off from people that you don't know, just jumping through your backyard and, and basically making your home feel unsafe, that's not something that I feel comfortable with them making it an Airbnb situation and them just letting anybody move in there because they didn't really take care of the tenants that they had to begin with. And so when you think about, when you look at my fence, I had to pay for that out of pocket. It was not a police report made about that, but that actually happened. So the safety, I have kids, I have multiple kids. They go to school at Central. They have to walk up and down that street. We have neighbors that walk up and down that street every day. Me and my wife walk up and down that street every day. And when that family was living there, or whoever was living there, it was a very aggressive situation. I, you know of situations where people have to ride down the street, and when you come to this certain house and everybody's standing outside, you get a little tense because you don't know what's going on, going on. And me being the man in my family happened to address these people multiple times and tell them, hey, keep your kids out of my backyard, or keep your kids from jumping over my fence, or me even having to protect my property like that puts me at already, I'm already at a uneasy state from the job that I have to do. So to come home and feel like I have to protect even more and be on defense even more, it's something I don't want to have to deal with. And it's something I haven't had to deal with, with the neighbors we have now. When they did have those people move out, it was a breath of fresh air for me and my entire family and then for the whole neighborhood. And so that's what I want to speak on, and that's what we had to deal with, with the last people they had there, yeah.
Thank you. All right, and we asked the applicant to come back up. Mr. Vong?
Can I also come up with him? He just has an English barrier.
Yes, yes. Sure.
Okay, my name is Darla Phillips, and I am an Airbnb co-host. I rent my home out for Airbnb, and I have for about two years. And, um, Hung Vong hired me as a co-host to help him because he didn't really know where to start or what to do with the Airbnb. So that's why I'm here representing him. I hear all of this, and I'm very sorry about all that. But what I would like to say is that, um, my, I live in a very safe neighborhood too. I live in a neighborhood just like the one that you live in. And it seems like the long-term rental is the issue. Um, because once you get someone in there, then it's very hard to get someone out when you sign a year's lease. So it seems like that's the issue, which Hung obviously doesn't want to deal with anymore as well. It's his property, his investment. He's worked hard in his investment. And of course, when you sign a lease with somebody, you have them vetted, but you still don't know who these people are sometimes. And so, um, with an Airbnb, it's a short-term rental, meaning that you're not going to deal with, I'm going to say, any of those issues. Maybe once in a great while, I have not had to deal with any of those issues. The thing about an Airbnb is that it's not just transient people. Like, for example, um, my Airbnb rents from like three days to five days. Those people come in town for a funeral because their father died one block over from my house. They come in town because they have people in the military that they want to see. They want to see their sons and daughters. So they're coming in, they're not coming in to make trouble. They're not coming in to have parties. They're not coming in to sell drugs. They're coming because they need a place to stay. A lot of them have pets. And so I offer pets in my home as long as they're, and we have criteria. Airbnb has criteria. They vet their people, so you have to give your, um, uh, um, ID, your information, your address, and so forth. Um, also, I have rules. I have house rules. So I, in my house rules, I say, okay, you cannot have any loud noise after eleven o'clock at night. You can set your rules for your home. That's the way Airbnb rentals do. And that means if you have a person that comes in that is, you know, I did have one time, I will say, one time I had somebody and they had, it was, it was innocent. They just invited a bunch of their friends over because it was for a prom. And, um, I, I have a Ring doorbell, which he has as well, and that's how you can monitor your property. So with the Ring doorbell, I always monitor my property. And, um, some of the kids came in and they were out in the street just having fun with the neighbors, and the neighbors were fine with it. Um, but I called them and said, you have to leave right now. And so they left immediately. So you have a lot of control with an Airbnb versus what you have with a long-term rental. The long-term rental, again, as you guys already know, you've experienced all of this over and over, okay? But with the Airbnb, again, they come in for three to five days. I don't, and again, he can set up his calendar any way he wants. As far as the property manager, I'm going to be that person because I know what I'm doing. I'm a five-star super host. And so I'm very strict with my rules. If they, if they do anything they're not supposed to do, I tell them, I go and I come over, I knock on the door. I go in and clean my house myself, so I will be coming over, cleaning the home. I will let him know if anything happens. I will have monitor of the Ring doorbell at all times, twenty-four, seven. Um, and so I think the situation, which I feel really bad for everyone here because of Hung, because unfortunately, what he does, he went in and he completely gutted the home, and he furnished it now. So now it's ready for an Airbnb. He didn't realize what he had to go through in order to get approval, in order to rent on a short-term lease. So he, his home is beaut, it's gorgeous. It's nicer than my home. And it's all brand-new furniture. Everything's brand-new in there. And so we're going to charge a higher nightly rate, one seventy-five. I charge one fifty-five because mine's a two-bedroom. His is a three-bedroom. So you get people that, I guess, I don't know how you want to categorize people. I don't know, but I know you guys are worried about, you know, drug addicts and so forth. I've, I've never had an issue with that in the two years that I've rented, um, my home. So hopefully, you know, the short-term rental will be better than the long-term rental. If you deny the short-term rental, then he's going to have to go back to the long-term rental. And then you're back in the same situation that you were in to begin with, which is you just don't know who's going to be in there. The short-term rental is, again, they have a process. You've set your own rules. And then three to five days, I've never had anyone stay in my house more than fourteen days because that's the parameters that I set. He, if he doesn't want to do that, he doesn't have to do that either. Um, as far as the parking and stuff, people come in one or two cars because, again, they're not coming to party and they're not coming from out of town to like have a heyday or have a big party. They're coming for a funeral or for military or to see their family or for Thanksgiving or for a holiday. I mean, I can't believe how many people live in Sherwood. Um, because I just moved there five years ago from Florida, and it's like shocking to me. Uh, my son told me I was crazy to do my house as an Airbnb. Who comes to Sherwood? Nobody. But I rent my house probably, you know, three to four times a month, three days. And then there's a lull three or four, five days, and then four, four or five days. And then there's a lull, and again, I'm in that house constantly. As soon as they check out, I go in and I clean. So I will may be managing his property for him and doing all that for him. So I hope that answers some questions, and you want to say anything?
All right, thank you definitely for that and, uh, addressing that. What I want to do at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to our commissioners and see if they have any, any questions, uh, or comments or statements.
This is for staff. Um, since it's been operating, obviously, there's been no police reports or anything like that that you found in?
No, well, we go back, we go back three years to check, and we, we found none.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm sorry about that. Can we please, we want to make sure if we address anything applicants are out there, we want to try to maintain order, uh, and try to, if we have any, if the, uh, staff, excuse me, if the, any of the commissioners have any questions, uh, for any of the neighbors or the community, we would definitely bring you back up. Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Um, I do have one question. Is it currently being used as an Airbnb now, or is it vacant?
No, it's been, he has been remodeling the home for how long?
Uh, two years.
Almost two years. So he just gutted the home, and like I said, it's, everything is brand-new. So no, nothing's been in that home.
Okay, thank you.
But can I say one more thing? Um, because if we can't do the Airbnb, then it's going to go back to a long-term rental, which I think, again, is that a worse situation or a better situation? Like I said, I can manage the property. You know, you guys have any issues, you can call me. Not a problem at all. I wouldn't even be suggesting it if I had issues with my own home. Um, and I just have it, you know, and I live in a nice neighborhood like you guys live in, so.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you please address?
Okay.
Because we can't hear you. If we can't have it on record, we can't.
Okay, sorry. I'm just asking them if they would rather have it.
Speak to the microphone and address.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
They would rather have it go back to a long-term and have the same problems that they're having, you know, prior versus a short-term, and then I would be the one managing the property.
I think we have, uh, some more questions here. Commissioner Brown.
So, you know, we've, as my commissioners know, we've heard this story multiple times, okay? So I guess the question I would have is, what are the house rules that are going to be in place for this property? I know as commissioners, we had to consider that, and I'm sure the, the, the neighbors, I mean, I appreciate their nervousness, so I'm just wondering, what are the house rules going to be for this particular property?
You can set your own house rules, so we could.
That's not my question. What are they going to be?
Okay, well, we don't know yet. We haven't gotten that far because we're not approved yet. So of course, we're not going to set house rules for something that hasn't been approved. But we would be happy to talk with the neighbors and set house rules, like what would be the late time? Like my house, it's eleven P M. No, no craziness after eleven P M., no loud music, you know, lights out, a quiet neighborhood. So you can set your own house rules, and I can definitely set those with Hung and set those with the neighbors as well. They have issues. You know, whatever that would be, then we're happy to set those house rules.
Okay.
Check-in is eleven, basically the house rules are, um, check-in is eleven at my house, check-out is out at three.
Right.
Okay, when you're there, um, you have to live by the, of course, the, you know, the code of what you're saying. Um, and then when they check out, they just have to throw laundry in the washer and, you know, and leave the house and turn the air up, and that's all they have to do at my house. So, but if there's others, uh, situ- situations or stipulations that the neighbors want, then we can definitely incorporate that.
Right, and I, and I guess, as I said, we've heard a lot of these. We know the house rules process. What I want to understand is, it sounds like you haven't set those yet. Has there been any effort to communicate with the people on the street to say, hey, what house rules can we set to make you more comfortable with this situation? Has that, has that conversation happened?
No.
Okay.
You know, but I have asked them.
Okay.
I said my house, I wanted to put on Airbnb.
Okay.
And I'm applying the license.
Okay.
If you have any question, I have a co-host for, for Airbnb. I, we can come up to the neighbor.
Okay.
And can ask any question. You want to send Airbnb, and she's the one to explain to you. Suzie, I've asked Suzie.
And I'm sorry, we want to, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to go back and forth. Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. We want to make sure you address that, and if, uh, if any of the commissioners have any questions. We wanna make sure you address that and if uh, if any of the commissioners have any questions uh, for any of the opposition or anything like that, or any of the neighbors or the community, yeah, we can address those, so.
Yeah, I spoke with two or three neighbors in my neighbors about that. I said if I couldn't do, I probably, I not prove it, I wouldn't go back to rent for two years for long-term, uh, it used to be. You know, and I said, if he, if he is not, the person that rents is not good, they only last for one or two days. But I can set my rule on Airbnb, I can have more control over it than I let the RPM run it for me. You know?
Yes. So what, so what you're saying is you're, 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 you're open to listening to the neighbors?
Yes, I will.
You're open to hearing their concerns?
Yes, I will.
You're open to adhering to their, they're saying, hey, if our lights go off at ten PM?
Yeah, I asked the sushi about it and also two of my neighbor, one is my right-hand, she's not showing up today. But she agreed for me to do Airbnb. She's live on the right-hand side of me. She live in a sixth total creep. But she's not coming today. And there's the one, it's a yellow house on the left. And he's, he's living about, I think, what, couple, couple of house from sushi's house. I asked them too, him too, I told him about it too.
But there has not been a formal, maybe an associated meeting or neighbors meeting or anything like that, so it has not been
Yeah.
on that level, is that correct?
Excuse me, sir.
I said you haven't been to an association meeting or a group, neighbors meeting or any kind of collective meeting?
I haven't.
But you're open, but you're open to listen to them?
Yeah, I offered them, that, I offered them, if they want me to, to have a co-host, to come to neighbor and explain about it.
Oh, I think I got you.
They all have my numbers.
I think I understand.
And they didn't connect me.
Yes, he did offer to the neighbors that I would come and speak with them. Even my phone number, said that I, I told them they can call me anytime, but nobody called me, nobody reached out to me.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get to that. Hold on, thank you. We gotta, hold on.
Not everybody that's here.
Not everybody in here.
No, we're gonna say, commissioner, hold on, we have a question from a commissioner.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Baxter, did you have something to say?
If, if your application is, is not approved, you all plan to make it a, a long-term rental, correct? Long-term rental in Little Rock, is it thirty days or above?
And, and just to be clear, we, we don't have any jurisdiction over the long-term rental. So there's no, there's no way to s- to stop that. Um, I, I think, and guys, we're sort of in a difficult spot up here. We, we have, one of the other commissioners referenced that we've heard this uh, sort of same back and forth many, many times. The city board has approved five hundred short-term rentals in our community, up to five hundred short-term rentals. And we are, we haven't even approved one hundred yet. So um, what we are seeing though is a little bit of a trend that short-term rentals uh, do better and cause less angst in a neighborhood than long-term rentals. But you guys have experienced the long-term rentals, so we're seeing short-term rentals do a little bit better. I have said until we get to five hundred, I'm going to vote yes and let the city board handle the appeal. Because the city board is, they're the institution that, that said, we'll have up to five hundred of these in our community. That's a lot of short-term rentals in our community. So, but this, this same back and forth goes on virtually every month here. And I totally get the neighborhood's concerns and I totally get the property owner's rights to rent out his property and uh, we're just sort of, we're just sort of caught in the middle um, on this one. But um, um, I, I just wanted to let you guys know that we're, there's a, there's a limit of five hundred in our community and we are, what number are we on, Monty? We're on one twenty-five, so we have approved a hundred and twenty-four of them, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Uh, Commissioner Baxter, did you have a comment, question?
No, I just, I mean, it's just, once again, these are just very, very difficult choices for us. Because on the one hand, of course, I mean, this is just personally speaking, you know, I mean, we want, we want you to be able to do what you've, you can do with your property, but on the flip side, of course, the voices of the neighbors matter, so you know, just know that uh, we appreciate y'all being here and, and uh, we were definitely thinking about these things as Commissioner Hart said, you know, hopefully this gets resolved more clearly when the time comes.
Thank you. And do you have a question? Go ahead.
Oh, Chairman Vickers, I just wanna let the applicant know that before y'all take a vote, uh, you always have an opportunity to defer and set those conditions that possibly, I'm not saying you're gonna win any sway over this neighborhood, but one of the options that you can do is say, hey, I've, I've heard the neighbors, I've heard the commissioners, what I'd like to do is just step back, defer this application at this time, meet with them, see if there's some conditions that you can set in the application that would be a part of your application and would control your operations that may sway not only the planning commission or the board of directors and, and, and help uh, alleviate some of their concerns. So that's an option to you, or you can move forward with the vote now. So I just wanted to let you know, I'm the, the staff attorney for the planning commission. And I just wanna let you know, that is an option to you.
What do you wanna do?
And I, I will say this attorney over to, I, I think you made a very good point. I would piggyback off of that. And I think, you know, the, the community have, you know, definitely addressed some strong concerns. But I think I've seen this and we approved one hundred and twenty-four of them, so I've seen, this is actually more, been more friendly conscious than, than we have seen in other cases. So I don't think y'all are that far apart, actually. I think, you know, the community has some strong concerns. I, I don't think they probably want a long-term uh, or, or a long-term leasing in there. Uh, but if they can get some terms that they're comfortable with, that you all can go before, even if y'all sit here after this and they have five strong points. Hey, we don't want noise after ten PM, we don't want XYZ, uh, what have you. I think it's something that the community could be able to deal with and it's something that they can monitor and they can control. And if something happens, they, they have a co-host and obviously they have the owner. So, I mean, I, I feel, I mean, you know, we've seen, you know, quite a few of them so far. Uh, but I don't think y'all are too far apart uh, than this, than maybe trying to get behind, it's something that you all can actually control and be able to call legal authorities if, if need be, but uh, this is it. Sir, yeah, come up, come up to the podium and I want to just get, just give you a brief time to make a statement.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm gonna have, um.
And if anything, if things got out of.
No, 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 sorry, we're gonna, wanna let this gentleman speak first and then y'all gonna come back here.
One of our big concerns, these are nice people. But at some point, they're gonna sell that house. And when they sell that house, it's still zoned for short-term rental. Who are we gonna get? I've been in that street for forty-five years. It's a very, it's been very quiet and I'm very concerned about. So they're good, they're gonna manage it, but they're gonna sell it at some point. And then it's wide open. That concerns us all. It's all I got.
Thank you.
Um, point of information? It, the zoning of short-term rental wouldn't run with the property, right? It would just be for this application?
It's a, it's a rezoning to a, to a planned development, so it would, it would stay that.
So it does run with the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But to Commissioner Vickers' point, if they come to an agreement and those differences are, and again, we're not encouraging you to defer, but it's an option, if those would be put in there to make the neighbors more comfortable, that would carry over no matter who, those would carry over no matter who owned it, correct?
That's true.
And I will say again, not to sway, um, but as it, as it has been mentioned, uh, the option to defer and collaborate, I'd say due to the, the history and, and the trauma, I'll, I'll call it, um, at that residence in the past. I'd say it's something to, to consider.
So I wanna bring the uh, applicant and the co-host back up. And madam, you have something to say?
I just wanted to say that if there was an issue, all they would have to do is call and we could remove the guests. We are allowed to say, these are the rules, no loud music and whatever those rules that we put in place. If they, if they um, go against those rules, then we're allowed to call and say you have to leave. And they will have to vacate the property. So that is something that we have control over. An Airbnb stands behind it.
No, I'm saying that's, that's actually a good thing. And I think that's what Commissioner Bernard was saying, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner Hart was saying, uh, maybe uh, setting up a time or a meeting with the neighbor, uh, with the neighbors. And I think they have just, you know, addressed maybe some concerns or, you don't have to defer, again. This is totally at, at the applicant's discretion.
What do you wanna do?
You know, you can set, uh, monitor some things that they can control. Because I, I believe as long as they can keep their, their neighborhood safe and they feel a level of comfort that if something happens, because you can't prohibit things from happening, things gonna happen, right? It's life, right? Um, but if they can have a sense of control over any of that situations, I'd just like the gentleman with the, uh, the firefighter here, and we appreciate your service, sir. Uh, but if, if he knows that there's not gonna be, you know, people coming in his backyard or what have you, or at least he can control that, then obviously tensions go down, safety goes up and mo- majority of people are happy, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's all we were saying, you don't have to defer.
Okay.
But if you all wanted to do, just to get some conditions and get these rules in place that the community can get behind or the neighborhood can get behind, then I think everybody feels comfortable. Does that make sense?
So deferring means that we speak with them and then we come back again?
Yeah, and, and you can actually, you know, defer without prejudice. So you basically, you can come back without the expense or would they, would, would they be at expense?
There would still be re-notification.
Even though we only have eight uh, in attendance? Okay, so let me, I stand correct. You can defer at, at, at the applicant's expense, uh, but you can defer and come back next month uh, after talking to uh, the neighborhood or you can move forward and we can vote on it today. It's the applicant's choice.
What do you wanna do? It's your choice. If you wanna talk with them, can we ask them if they're willing to talk or?
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. Take, take, take a brief minute if you want.
Do you guys wanna talk about it or would you rather just go into a long-term rental? Because it's not gonna be a short-term, it's gonna.
Yeah. Then you know who's there. There's a safety issue for us. Like you said earlier, we have so many children on our street. They're at the bus stop. I would, I would be more comfortable with the long-term rental. As a result, because when they're short-term rental, you don't know who's coming in and out.
And I'm sorry, let, let me, let me, let me stop right there. So we, we're not, that's not what we were saying. Let me, let me be very uh, direct. What, the question was, uh, I think, were they open to discussing of collaborating, talking about rules or rules for the Airbnb?
They said no.
So the answer, the answer is no, uh, the neighborhood is not open to discussing and talking about Airbnb rules? Okay, so y'all, so, so we're, we're not gonna get off into the long-term rental because we already know that's an option. But I guess what, what I'm hearing historically, and correct me if I'm wrong, the problems came from a long-term rental, right? No, I was just, I was just, yes or no, I'm just, I'm just saying, was it a short-term rental that y'all had a problem with or was it a long-term rental?
Long-term.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Okay. Well, okay, so now that we, let's get focused back here.
Okay.
So, um.
One more question?
Sure.
Midterm rental, is that go with the long-term rental?
Again. There's, there's, there's no such thing as a midterm rental.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
So we could do midterm without any approval?
Again, we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over that.
What you're calling midterm is long-term.
Midterm is long-term?
Yeah.
Okay. Midterm is um, traveling nurses coming in and staying for two to three months, just like you heard earlier with the traveling nurses.
And we wanna make sure we, let's, let's address it up here.
Midterm is like two to three months where traveling nurses could come in and rent.
No, 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 what we're saying, we don't have, we technically don't have jurisdiction over that.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Definitely, y'all more than we'll, we'll speak after the meeting, but we wanna make sure we can respect all the citizens' time.
Okay.
And uh, we wanna make sure we, um, you know, respect and also the applicant.
We're just trying to decide if he wants to defer.
No, no, I understand. If you need to take a, just a quick, uh.
I would say don't defer, just, let's just get a decision and then we'll just do midterm.
Yeah, get a decision now.
Okay.
Thank you, all right. So I'm, uh, one, one last time, if there's any other commissioners have any uh, questions, comments? Concerns? If not, I would love to enter, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the zoning request in Z dash one zero one seven zero, subject to compliance to the comments and conditions noted, noted in paragraphs E and F in the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. May I please get a roll call vote? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
No.
Bernard?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Person? Russell? Samad?
Yes.
Trimble? Baxter?
No.
Vickers?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you applicant for coming out, uh, thank you everybody for coming out uh, on this particular item. At this time, I wanna ask, there is any kind of a citizen's address or statement? Are there any other business? Uh, please uh, come to the podium, please. I'm sorry?
This is just general public comment. This is not about this application.
Yes.
I guess I missed my uh, part that was on the agenda for tonight. I was coming to hear about, what are the rules of the law for the property on Seventh Street. I got two letters telling me to come to hear about this, but um, I guess I got here after four o'clock and I might have missed it.
What was the item, what was item number?
It was a, 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 two properties on Seventh Street between twenty-eighth and twenty-seventh and, or twenty-sixth and Seventh Street.
Are you talking about Marshall Street, ma'am?
Huh?
You're talking about Marshall?
No, it's on Seventh Street. Seventh.
That item's not on this agenda.
The lady told me, I, I kept going out to try, find out if it was, and I got two letters saying.
Would you say that lady, who are you referring to, please?
Uh, in an office just right up the hall. And I got two letters saying, come to July tenth.
That, that item you're talking about is twenty-eight oh-two and twenty-eight oh-six was seven?
Uh-huh.
That was item number six and it was deferred to the August fourteenth meeting.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be, it'll be coming back up in August.
August what? August?
Fourteen.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, August fourteenth started four PM.
Okay, I try my best to be.
Yeah, no, it's okay, excuse.
Can I, can I just find out from you, it, what is it about? What are they trying to do? Build something that is gonna be like a Airbnb or a rental? Because I don't live on that property anymore, but it's my property, it's a family property and I just wanna know what's going on.
Oh, this is your property?
Yeah. No, 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 the property within two hundred feet of it.
She, she would be notified.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if it's proper to be discussing about an item.
Yeah, actually, well, technically, obviously, we, we can't really discuss, we can't, we can't discuss the item. Uh, as of right now, if you have information on it, obviously you got the letter.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell me anything except just it's rezoning.
Ma'am, you, you, you can call our staff tomorrow and we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did they answer your question, madam? And what are the, uh, right, what are the office hours?
Eight, eight o'clock to five o'clock.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight to five PM.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, if we don't have any other mi- um, statements, comments, or the business, uh, this meeting is adjourned.